The Topeka City Council Meeting will come to order. We do apologize that due to technical difficulties, the screens are not working this evening. Council members, there's one there on the podium that you can --[31.59][31.59](laughter) That's ours.[34.11][34.11](laughter) If we get closer, we'll be able to see it. But the clerk will certainly be reading and telling us the votes and everything that we need to be aware of. So if everyone would please rise as you are able for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Please have a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no proclamations or presentations, so we proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Wolgath?
Here.
Councilmember Hiller?
Councilwoman Hiller is here.
Councilmember Claire?
Here.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Councilwoman Ortiz is here.
Councilmember Emerson?
Here.
Councilmember Deila Isla?
Here.
Councilmember Jensen?
Present.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Here.
Councilmember Cohen?
Here.
And Councilmember Harmon.
Councilmember Harmon is engaged for a while, will be joining us later in this evening, and I recognize Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to introduce my councilmember for the day. This is Jayden Haley, and he won the opportunity to sit in this chair at the beginning of this meeting at Sunday evenings, Ward Mead NIA Neighborhood Night Out drawing. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmembers, there are no additions or deletions to the minutes, and you saw that you received notice that we will be having four executive sessions at the conclusion of the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Certainly. Councilwoman Ortiz?
I wanted to pay little Jayden for his time up here, if he would come back here.
Go up there. She wants you.
Right. Now, Jayden, I get 50 cents a day, so I'm gonna give you a dollar, okay?[185.45][185.45](laughter) I put a bowl down here, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Jade, for your participation. We will proceed then. Next item, item four, the appointments.
A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Champagne Void to the Citizens' Advisory Council for a term ending August 9, 2020.
That is the appointment, into your pleasure. Councilwoman Schwartz moves to approve. Councilwoman Isla seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. The mayor does not vote.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes. The appointment is approved. I would like to introduce Champagne Void. If you would stand, please. The new member will be joining the Citizens Advisory Council. Thank you for your participation.[251.62][251.62](applause) We will proceed with the consent agenda. Clerk would read.
A is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting DTI an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945150 at seek concerning noise prohibitions. B is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting Lethelf an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945150 at seek concerning noise prohibitions. C are minutes of the regular meeting of July 18, 2017, and special meeting of July 22, 2017, and July 28, 2017. There are two cereal malt beverage applications, and staff is recommending approval.
That is the consent agenda. Your recognition, Councilman Jensen moves to approve. Deputy Mayor Cohen seconds. There's no discussion. All those in favor, vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes. The consent agenda is approved. Proceed to the action items. Six A, an ordinance.
A is an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber authorizing the issuance of $28,490,000 in aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds, Series 2017A of the City of Topeka, Kansas, and currently refunding the Series 2012A bonds for economic savings under the authority of KSA 10-101-2125, inclusive KSA 10-427 at seek, and charter ordinance number 89 of the city, all as amended.
Mr. Intraum City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Good evening. I will collectively introduce the first three items. As is typical, these items are a series. As you know and from experience, you know that the first item will do related to general obligation bond issuance is the ordinance itself, which obligates us to those bonds. And then the second item, six B, is a resolution which is quite thick and spells out all the details of the bonds. And then item six C is actually the temporary notes for projects that aren't yet constructed but that we need temporary financing for. At your place this evening, there is a summary that has been prepared by Columbia Capital, and I'll just run you through the second page of that very quickly, right behind the cover sheet. On our bids this morning, we received seven bids for our GO bonds, and the winning bid was actually the same company that got our bids last year, the Robert W. Baird &amp; Company, 2.28%. That's a good percentage. It's not quite what it was last year, but as we know, rates aren't quite what they were last year either, so we're still very pleased with this. And then for our temp notes, JP Morgan Securities came in with a bid of 0.968%. As you know, we, as part of the GO bonds, we are doing a refunding of a previous series from about five years ago. That series was about $16 million, and we anticipate we'll save about $1.2 million over the life of that series through this refunding. Of course, we won't know until the end of that process, but we anticipate that's about what it'll be. The final note I would make is that these are 15-year bonds per our new policy and procedure, which I know greatly pleases the body, that we're now on a 15-year bond payment schedule. So that's really good news that we're able to keep with that. And then the final thing I would point out is that in the audience, we have Phil Wolfe, who's our bond counsel, and then Jeff White and Kalen Dwyer from Columbia Capital, and they'd be able to speak to any very technical issues for you.
Mm-hmm.
So with that, I stand for questions.
The fact we had seven bids is very good. Is that not --
Yeah.
It's fantastic.
We're pleased with that.
Do you think -- is there any relationship to the doing this for 15 years rather than 20? I just wondered if there's any effect that has on the bidding.
I would defer that very technical question maybe to Mr. White, but I would say that when Nikki and I came three years ago, we were scrounging to get just a couple of bids. And so I think collectively, it's due to our increased financial awareness and some of the policies and procedures we've put in place.
Okay.
That's being recognized, and our increased rating has certainly helped.
Questions to the Intraum City Manager?
Make a motion.
All right. Well, on forward, first one, A, right? Deputy Mayor?
Yep.
Cohen moves approval of item A, the ordinance, the general obligation bonds. Councilwoman Claire, seconds. Any discussion on it, on this first one? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes. The ordinance is approved. We go to item six B, a resolution on the bonds.
B is a resolution introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber prescribing the form and details of general obligation bond series 2017A of the City of Topeka, Kansas, in the aggregate principal amount of $28,490,000, the issuance of which were authorized by the City pursuant to its ordinance adopted and approved August 8, 2017, and authorizing certain other documents in action in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Mr. Intraum City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. One thing I did neglect to mention in my previous introduction is that also at your place this evening is an updated ordinance and resolution. Again, as you know from experience, we never know what the final amounts will be until we do the bond -- or the selling of the bonds, which is typically the morning of, and so we update that then for you at the council meeting.
All right. Are there any questions on the temporary note -- I'm sorry, the resolution on the general obligation bonds, item B? Councilman Jensen?
Move to approve.
Moves to approve. Councilwoman Isla, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes. The resolution on the bonds is approved. Go to item C, the temporary notes.
C is a resolution introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber authorizing and directing the issuance of temporary notes, Series 2017A, general improvements of the City of Topeka, Kansas, in the aggregate principal amount of $42,385,000 for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of one renewing a portion of the Series 2016A temporary notes of said city dated September 13, 2016, and pay a portion of the cost of certain improvements of said city.
Mr. Intraum City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. One more brief comment. Temporary notes, as we all know, are just that, they are temporary financing for the city for projects that are not yet ready to -- that haven't been constructed or built or aren't in their final stages, so we need temporary financing. As you are aware, we typically only issue bonds once a year, and so these are projects which we anticipate will be ready to move within the next year. No guarantees, but certainly that's our anticipation. I stand for questions.
Seeing none. Councilman Jensen?
Move to approve.
Moves to approve. Councilwoman Emerson, seconds. Any discussion? All those in -- yes. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one comment, and it's probably best here. One, I really do appreciate us rolling back the terms of the bonds because that saves us literally millions of dollars and therefore improves our rating and rates as well. I appreciate the work. I've been back and forth with a number of questions with Nikki in the hammering of the temp notes list as well. We're still working on wrapping up projects, and so I'm looking forward to seeing more of those close out because we have literally pages of projects that have been stringing along. Also, when we went through the CIP, there were questions about fire station, and right now, we are bonding 1.8 -- or we're temp noting 1.8 million for a fire station, which doesn't have -- which we don't even own land or a location for, and we don't have a master plan. And that, at these rates, will cost us $18,000 this year. So I just -- I'll go ahead and support this, but I do think if we all keep an eye on these things at the CIP time, as well as when it comes time to temp note, when something is a placeholder, maybe we need to keep thinking that through in terms of spending money on it. $30,000 is a $1,000 raise a piece for 30 people. It's a lot of money, if not just a little bit.
Thank you. Have a discussion. Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes. The resolution on temporary notes is approved. And we also want to thank Phil Wolfe and Capitol help that we receive on this. Your work is greatly appreciated. Thank you, everyone. Go to item D, an ordinance on zoning.
D is an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850050 of the Topeka Municipal Code by providing for certain changes in zoning on property located at 2014 Southeast Washington Street from R1 Single Family Dwelling District to O&amp;I2 Office and Institutional District.
Mr. Intraum City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, as Mr. Feiner makes his way to the podium for what would have been a good presentation had you been able to see it --[887.12][887.12](laughter) I'll make a couple of comments and steal some of his thunder, as is typical. The first thing I'd point out is that on your cover sheet, this should have indicated, and it didn't, that this is coming to you from the Planning Commission, and it was approved by the Planning Commission on a five-to-zero vote with two abstentions. So you're basically, if you choose to, affirming what the Planning Commission has recommended to you. So with that, I'll ask Mr. Feiner to speak to the item.
Okay. Mr. Feiner.
Thank you. Good evening, governing body. This proposal for rezoning is at the corner of Southeast 21st and Indiana in the Central Highland Park neighborhood. The proposal would rezone the property known as the old National Guard Armory from R1 to O&amp;I2 Office and Institutional to allow for the development or repurposing of this for the East Topeka Learning Center. This building from the -- built in the 50s, probably been vacant for about 15 years. Actually, this is the perfect fit that when we did the neighborhood plan a few years ago, the neighborhood identified this, trying to be reused for the community, community-wide uses. Couldn't think of a better fit. The reason it's before you has to get rezoned is because the technical school, business school, does not -- is not allowed in the R1 residential district, so this does come before you for rezoning. And as the interim city manager said, the Planning Commission did recommend approval unanimously, as well as staff, so.
Thank you. Are there questions, Mr. Feiner? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in my district and very proud that we're going to do this very much needed place there. Why did the two abstain? Did they say, Bill?
Yes, Councilwoman Ortiz, they were involved with the consultant for the project, so they're engineers.
So it's not like they were against the project, basically abstaining for --
Conflict.
Conflict, potential conflict of interest. Well, I'm happy to see this, and I'll be happier to see it rolling, and with that, I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. They move to approve the ordinance. Second, Councilwoman Isla, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes. The ordinance is approved. Item E, another zoning-related issue.
It is a farm and plat for McFarland Farm subdivision number five on property located between southwest Steeple Chase Lane and southwest Prairie Road, all being within the City of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas.
Mr. Intraum City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. What you have before you is also coming from the Planning Commission on a recommendation of six-to-zero with no abstentions, that you recommend approval on this. The governing body typically doesn't see very many plats throughout the course of a year. I think we would estimate that staff does 95% of the plats because they're minor plats, but this happens to be -- but we characterize as a major plat, and so Mr. Feiner will come forward and ask for your approval on this item.
Thank you. Mr. Feiner.
Thank you once again. Brief background, the reason this is before you as a major plat is they are dedicating right-of-way a new street. This is the third phase of the McFarland Farm subdivision. So that is why any time there's a dedication of a street, it does have to come before the governing body for acceptance. This is really a -- this was preliminary platted in 2000 into 15 lots, acre average. They reduced the size of the lots, and so now they're going from 15 to 19 lots. They're still at least a half acre to an acre size, so still a good size, but they are getting a few more lots out of this. With that background, we do recommend approval as well as the Planning Commission.
And the street is a private street? It's not a city-maintained?
It would be a city-maintained. It would be a public street.
Okay. That's the one going in that the houses front on?
It would be off of Steeple Chase, which is the main one that comes in off of 10.
Okay.
And then this Ballmore --
Ballmore?
Ballmore.
Ballmore?
Yeah, I haven't -- yeah. Sure.
Got it. All right.
Close enough.
Okay. Are there questions for Mr. Feiner? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill, this is kind of a gated community. I have to go see my dentist, so do they have like their own little -- like, I don't want to say NIA because it's not a NIA, but their own little homeowners or whatever? Have they had any input in this, or?
Councilwoman Ortiz, I don't know necessarily if they have a entity, like a homeowners association, but certainly when we had the neighborhood meeting, the neighborhood within 500 feet of this was notified that this was going on.
So you did have a neighborhood meeting?
We did.
Okay. And how was that meeting?
And that was well-received. Like I said, again, the lots are a little bit smaller, but nothing to the detriment of what's already out there. You have some very large lots.
Absolutely.
And then you have some smaller lots, so this is kind of in-between those two. So it was well-received.
Okay.
And this area is not in the gated area?
Correct.
Yeah.
It is not.
Oh, it's not?
It's not in the gated area. It's an area that -- sort of a new area just being developed.
It's just along, if you --
I can't see.
Yeah, I guess.[1244.33][1244.33](laughter)
When we come down there. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I see it.
It's right along 10th Avenue, the portion we just finished across from Gage Park and Cemetery.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Feiner? We have a person to -- I'm sorry. Councilwoman Hiller.
Since the issue came up, Bill, just to clarify, when you do those first hearings, people get invited within 500 feet, and then if there is an organized and known neighborhood association, they get invited as well?
True.
Otherwise, there's always the invitation to the neighbors to come, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's exactly what we do.
Thank you.
And we have another person to speak, Steve Lacoste.
Good evening. My name is Steve Lacoste. I'm from Baldwin West Engineers. Here on behalf of the developer, I was at the neighborhood meeting, and as far as I can tell, the only people in attendance were people who lived in McFarland Farm. Many of them were outside of the notification radius that they had heard by word of mouth, and it was a good meeting, and they were satisfied with the outcome. That's all I have.
Very good. Are there other questions, Mr. Lacoste? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you for your public comment, your input. Any other discussion, questions? If not, Councilwoman Schwartz?
Move adoption.
She moves approval of the -- it is a final plat. And Councilwoman Claire, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes. The final plat is approved. Go to item F, public hearing.
F is a public hearing to obtain public input and answer questions from the public regarding the City of Topeka 2018 Consolidated Annual Action Plan.
Mr. Intraum City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As noted by the city clerk, this item 6F does not require council action except to open the public hearing on the 2018 annual action plan that we have to submit to the U.S. Department of HUD, Housing and Urban Development. As you know, we're required to do that. We get approximately $6 million in funds, or anticipate getting about $6 million in funds for the upcoming year, and we want to and are required to take up public input as to how those funds ought to be best spent.
Okay.
I would note that I saw at some point Cory Wright is hiding back there, but Cory Wright is in the audience to answer problematic questions.
She oversees much of this program.
Yes.
Okay. So as you understand, we have a public hearing tonight to receive input from the community, and then next week, it's on the agenda that we take action on this. So at this point, we will declare the public hearing open. You do not need to sign up in advance, but anyone in the audience who wishes to speak may come forward and do so. This is a public hearing for anyone who wishes to speak. Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed, and that completes the action on that item. It will be then for action by the council next week. We go to item G.
G is a public hearing to obtain public input and answer questions and objections from taxpayers regarding the proposed 2018 City of Topeka operating budget.
Mr. Intraum City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Public hearing, round two. Again, there is no vote or action required by the council this evening. The purpose is to take final input on our 2018 operating budget. As you know, we've been really working on this for the better part of the last five or six months. We've had four, five, six rounds of public input, four or five council input meetings, and we've collectively compiled all that into a document, and this evening is another opportunity for the public to give input on the 2018 operating budget.
Okay. First, council members, I know you watch these. We had on the last item, 6F, we did have someone sign to speak, Mr. Ledbetter, but he told me he would be leaving, so that's why I did not call on him. All right. Now back to 6G, the public hearing on the budget. So again, anyone from the audience may speak. You don't need to sign up in advance, and this is the time to receive input from the community, and final action will be taken next week. Okay. The public hearing is open. Come forth.
You know, I did call in, so I hope I'm not overstepping my moment here.
No, this is that you do not need to sign up in a public hearing.
Okay. All right.
You're good.
Okay. Well, good evening. My name is Pam Menzlin. I live at 2626 Southwest Arbonia Place, meeting Mr. Cohen, my council representative. I attend First Baptist Church at 30th and McVicker in the Briarwood neighborhood, and I'm a member of Topeka Jump. And I've been able to be in front of the council two or three times this year talking to you about different campaigns that the Topeka Justice Unity Ministry Project, AKA Topeka Jump, is working on. I'm here tonight to address the affordable housing issue that we have been talking to you throughout the year. That was an issue at the NEOMI Action Assembly in April, and Mayor Walgath had given a -- had committed to devising a proposal for the council to have $500,000 of some of your leftover money into the Affordable Housing Project, and I was here at the council meeting that night when that was voted down. And at that meeting, I hope I heard correctly, that there was a pledge coming from the council that you would be working on and plan of research and investment into the affordable housing question. I've been involved in the Jump campaign the last two years, working to create additional possibilities for safe and affordable housing, so the Jump Organization has given you input on how maybe that could be done. And our direct input is in for the Topeka families that fall in the low to middle income brackets. In our research, we have learned that in Topeka, nearly one-half of our renters pay 50% of their income on rent. As a member of the Jump Organization, I have witnessed but also talked with families that have rising concern for their loved ones regarding affordable housing. For two years, my peers and I have come before you to speak of the housing needs, and I know that you understand the benefits of affordable housing, but it seems that there's some debate over what role the City of Topeka has in providing those additional opportunities for affordable housing. Well, this is as much as an economic development issue as it is a human rights issue, and therefore my peers and I have come before you year after year to implore you to make a greater investment in affordable housing. And you already invest some monies in the Consolidated Action Plan proposed every year for the use of HUD money, but we know that real progress on revitalizing neighborhoods and having homes that match the incomes, that's the key to the people in the community, takes a greater and more strategic investment. And I don't see that happening just yet, and I'm going to tell you, I don't take the Topeka Metro, so I haven't been able to see that budget, but it seems to me that there needs to be a more intentional input from the council to create that affordable housing in the budget. So on behalf of the Jump Organization and the families that speak through Jump, please come up with a plan to invest more money in affordable housing. And after the research that we have done, one of the best ways you can invest that money is by setting up a structure in the community known as the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So on behalf of Topeka Jump, but more importantly, on behalf of the people in this community who are waiting on additional safe and affordable housing, we ask that you remain dedicated to the pledge that was made by this council to the research and implementation of a strategic monetary investment that will allow for more opportunities of safe and affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Thank you for your comments, Pam. They're appreciated. Are there other persons here who wish to speak on this item? Are there other persons here who wish to speak on this item, the 2018 City of Topeka budget? Opportunity for anyone in the community to speak. Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed, and that completes our action as far as item G is concerned. If you know to the next item, the budget, item H, resolution.
H is a resolution introduced by interim City Manager Doug Gerber, setting the public hearing to consider the advisability of establishing a community improvement district for the Wheatfield Village District at 29th and Southwest Fairlon Road.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you again. From holding two public hearings, the next two items will deal with calling two public hearings, both related to the Wheatfield Village District project that we've heard presentations on over the course of the past few months. Item 6H specifically will ask the governing body if you adopt the resolution. It will call for a public hearing on September 12th to discuss the details of a potential community improvement district in that location. So we would ask for you to adopt the resolution so that we can get that public hearing date set for September 12th.
So all we're doing is setting the date? We're not doing any, taking any action on the proposal?
No action on the proposal, just setting the date so that we can, between now and then, work out those details.
And then you come back at that time. We'll have the specifics of what we'd be voting on. We have it before that.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, all right. Deputy Mayor Cohen?
I'd like to make a motion.
You move to approve. Councilman Delise LaSecondes, any discussion? Councilman Hiller?
Along the lines of what you said, could you clarify what your target date is to have the proposal ready to distribute to us before the hearing?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Hiller, I don't know that we have a target date in mind, except to say that the September 12th date does give us five weeks, four weeks, to get stuff lined up. And we would obviously want to get you the information ahead of time so that you could review it and digest it. So I would say a good target date for us would be early September, without putting anything too specific on it.
And we actually, the hearing is set, we have to have, we put the notice out, has to be 30 days, so that is determining the September 15th. That's how that date is determined.
That's correct.
Just wanted to pitch for making sure that we and the public also got to see it.
Any other discussion? There's been a motion and a second. There has, hasn't there? Somebody shake their head yes. There has. Okay, there's a move and a second. All those in favor of that, setting that date, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the resolution is approved. Go to item I, second one on Wheatfield Village.
I is a resolution introduced by interim City Manager Doug Gerber, setting the public hearing for consideration of the adoption of a redevelopment project plan for the Wheatfield Village redevelopment district.
Okay. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. If adopted, this resolution would set a public hearing date of also September 12th. As you recall, the council has already established a TIF district for the project, tax increment financing that was done at the end of June. This particular public hearing would relate to the project plan. So the plan, it's literally the plan for the project, would be available for public hearing at that September 12th date. I stand for questions.
Okay, are there questions? Another doing about the same. Deputy Mayor Cohen, this happens to be in your district, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. He moves. Councilman Delise LaSecondes, any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the resolution is approved. That completes the action items for this season. There are no discussion items. Congratulations, council. We're moving along, but we have a few things ahead of us. So we proceed with announcements. Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. First off, we have really good news. We have a, Brendan Wiley just walked in, Zoo Director. We have good news that we have a new male tiger coming to the Topeka Zoo. In fact, as I understand it, he should be coming by this building in about an hour and a half or two hours, yeah, en route to the zoo. So exciting news for Brendan and staff.
Yeah.
Additionally, and apparently today is also National or International Cat Day, so the timing is serendipitous for that. So I don't know if that was planned or not, but we'll stick with the fact that it was a good plan. In other good news, we've gotten some federal aid for some traffic projects around town. Specifically, we've gotten a total of $1 million for some traffic projects around town. The first will be $600,000 for 29th and McClure. And if you can picture that in your mind, that's right after you come off 470. It's coming out of the Advisors Excel area. That will help to add a turny lane to that area. And then $400,000 for Gage and Emlyn Drive. And that will, trying to remember which, what that does. I'll have Mr. Pete step forward, and he can clarify it for you.
That's down just south of the interstate.
Right.
On Gage.
Yes, so these were Traffic Safety, Highway Safety Improvement Funds that we got through KDOT, and that will add a center turn lane from Emlyn Drive up to I-70 on Gage.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Two more quick announcements, actually, one more quick announcement. We are now posting the street sweeping schedule on our website and Nextdoor, so we get a lot of questions about that from various council members, and that will now be posted on the website and Nextdoor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We will go to Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. One, kudos to everyone here and in town on Night Out, even with the rain. I mean, stunning 85 locations. I was feeling a little overwhelmed because 10 of them were in District 1, and it is really hard to clone yourself and get around, but I looked, and I don't think anybody had less than seven, you know, spread out where there, all sorts of organizations got together, both just once a year, kind of informally, as well as organizations that meet a lot. And I just think that's really impressive. And with that, we had the primaries, so congratulations to our present winner, as well as Mr. Duncan, for moving forward to mayor. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Claire?
I too want to thank everyone for the Night Out. I was making my rounds and trying to eat at each one.
Three months.
Yep. Good food, good food. Harley Party was great. They moved it inside at the Expo Center, well attended. Busy week.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'm going to ask Brendan Wiley to come up to the stand for me. And while he's doing that, I just want to thank everybody that participated in the Night Out Against Crime. My grandson did not get a whistle, but the chief made sure that my ears will hear this whistle, and he bottomed a whistle tonight. But on a serious note, I thank all of our officers, our emergency personnel, that spend their whole entire day out there, just seeing the kids and participating in the kids. And so it's awesome, and I'll make sure Chief, my grandson, gets that loud whistle. Let's go back to the movies at the zoo. You know, Brendan, if I tell them how many people were at this party, they won't believe me, so you're the face of the zoo, and they believe you. Can you give us an update?
We had 1,274 people for the first movie night at the zoo, and learned we need a louder sound system.
And I just wanted to say thank you. It was awesome. It was a great night, so many people there, and the movie was right. They ran out of food.
Yep.
Lines were long, but it was just something different and something that will be replicated at different zoos, trust and believe. But thank you, Brendan. That was awesome. Next, I'd like to announce that the Topeka Metro is going to let all of the 501 high school students, that's from 9 to 12, grades 9 to 12, ride free for the year of 1917 and 18. And I think that is very, very huge, that they have thought outside the box and are going to allow all our kids to get on the bus free. I think that's just tremendous and awesome. So whenever you see Susan Duffy, tell her what a great job that she's doing. And since we're talking about school, school starts next Monday, which is August the 14th, so watch out for all the kids, and watch out for those buses that are loaded down with our children. The last thing I want to talk about, real quick, if I may, Mr. Mayor, is the Night Out Against Crime. I attended at High Crest, and we still have a lot of work to do. When I say "we," I mean "we." There's no me and we with our youth, and this is why I advocate so hard for them. I seen middle school children, middle school youth and high school youth, and they went and they barged. One of them hit one of our officers, and they all barged, you know, they just bombarded them. And it was a terrible scene at the end of the party. And then we just had them just pouring out, just like ants. I was really, I want to say, I was there, I witnessed it all. I was grateful, and I did tell the chief this, for how our officers reacted, and some got arrested. But we have a lot of work to do. You know, I hear people say, "It's not our job." It is our job. We have babies raising babies. And so I will continue to fight the budget to put in jobs to be mentored to. These were middle school and high school kids. And I will continue to advocate for the lost youth that we have out there. Downtown, that's all great. Stuff that we're doing, that's all great. But we have a $300,000 budget. Well, Nikki will probably correct me if I'm a couple of dollars off. And you know what? We need to start investing in our children, in our children. It was really sad to see those officers fight off those children. Luckily, nobody got hurt, and I'm grateful for that. But I will leave that with my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll pile on. Also, here about National Night Out. Judy Wilson, who is the head of, excuse me, works for Safe Streets, organizes it every year, and she's a constituent in beautiful District 4, and she does a fantastic job, so I thank Judy and Safe Streets for all their work. I also, my hats off to all the police officers. They were, every place I was, there was two or three police officers there. They brought their motorcycles, they showed up in cars, and it was fantastic. What a great way, you know, for the community to meet them in a positive manner, instead of getting pulled over for speeding or something. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Councilman Delise. Councilman Jensen?
I'll also echo all the comments that have been said about National Night Out. I want to remind everyone that we are still, even though we've had some really, really nice weather the past few days, we are still at the height of summer. And please remember, your pets and animals that are outside, they don't have the option of getting into air conditioning. Make sure they don't spend too much time out in the heat, because it's not good on them, and they're covered with fur. Have a nice week, everybody.
Councilman Schwartz?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, we had a street sweeping vote, was it last year? And I thought, "I'll never see that street sweeper on my street," and I saw him this last week. And I just want to thank the city for doing a good job of cleaning up the streets and making that work. If you all didn't watch yesterday, there was a webcast on Momentum 2022, and our mayor did an excellent job on that. And I commend the CAP journal for doing these webcasts. I posted it on my Facebook page at 2:00 when it was happening, and several people got on. And I think we just need to get the word out of what's happening and the plan, the phases that we're going to do. My gem this week is Angela, our secretary, because she, this is her last night to be here. And I think, what, three, over three-plus years that she's been coming to every council meeting. So thank you, Angela, and we will miss you, and welcome, Liz.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Cohen?
Thank you, Mayor. Ditto, ditto, ditto. The Night Out was really fun. We went to two of them, and they had the West Star trucks there, and they were giving free bucket rides to the top of the bucket. I didn't get on it, actually. We got some calls this week about no construction over at 21st and Wanamaker because of a utility issue. Has that been remedied?
Councilman, I believe Cox has that line off today, and then tomorrow, we will get, there was another unidentified fiber line on there that we will get off tomorrow, and so Bettis should be there, ready to work.
Good deal. I just wanted to say, you know, I'm always glad when I get these calls, even though they're frustrating, and people are frustrated, is because we know that the roads are getting fixed.
That's right.
So, thank you.
Yeah, we have to go through some unpleasantness sometimes to get things fixed. Well, that completes the announcements, and we have no one signed for public comment. So we do have executive sessions this evening. If the city attorney would give the parameters for the first, is there something? I think that's right. Let's do the preliminary. We have council meeting next week. I think we need to do the preliminary agenda.
The August 15th agenda will include two presentations. We have a quarterly report from the Finance Department and a quarterly report from Public Works and Utilities. We will have six appointments. We will have a workers' compensation claim, and then we have four noise exception resolutions. We'll have a resolution approving the 2017 Taste of Topeka special event. We have an expenditure ordinance for the month of July. We'll have an ordinance and resolution for Combined Utility Revenue Bond Series 2017A. Public hearing and ordinance for Topeka Bible Church for vacation. Labor agreement for AFT Kansas Local 6406. And then we will have action on the 2018 Consolidated Annual Action Plan and the 2018 City of Topeka operating budget.
Thank you. Give me a couple more years, and I'll get this figured out. All right. Now, the city attorney will provide the parameters for the first executive session.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of 10 minutes for consultation with the city's legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privileged matters pertaining to a workers' compensation claim as justified by KSA 75-4319 subsection B-2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: members of the governing body, interim city manager Doug Gerber, financial and administrative services director Nikki Lee, human resources director Jackie Russell, and myself.
All right. Those are the parameters. Councilman Jensen?
Some move to approve.
Councilman Delise LaSecondes, any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine yes. So we will go into executive session, as soon as the room is clear. And the council does not see taking any, coming out of any of the executive sessions and taking action tonight on any items. So there would be no need to have any session, other than that we will adjourn the meeting at the end of the last executive session. Okay, we will go into executive session when the room is clear. The executive session has ended with no action taken. We will now have the parameters for our second executive session, if the city attorney would read those.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of 10 minutes to discuss the status of employer-employee negotiations as justified by KSA 75-4319 subsection B-3. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: members of the governing body, interim city manager Doug Gerber, human resources director Jackie Russell, financial and administrative services director Nikki Lee, budget and performance manager Nick Hawkins, and myself.
Those are the parameters. Councilwoman Claire moves that we go into executive session with those parameters. Councilman Jensen, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous, 10 minutes.
I tried that myself, and it has not worked well for me.
It's debatable. You're right.
The council has come out of the executive session with no action taken. There is a need to continue. There is a need to continue the current executive session. If there will be a motion to continue with the same people here for an additional five minutes. Councilman Jensen moves. Councilman Delise LaSecond. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. We'll go into executive, we'll continue this executive session. The governing body has come out of executive session with no action taken. The body is going to take a brief intermission of approximately 5 minutes, and then we'll have a motion to go into our third executive session. The city council is back in session. We are ready for our third executive session, if the city attorney would provide the parameters.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of 45 minutes for consultation with the city's legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privileged matters as justified by KSA 75-4319 subsection B2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: members of the governing body, interim city manager Doug Gerber, financial and administrative services director Nikki Lee, financial advisor Jeff White, and myself.
Okay, those are the parameters. Motion, Deputy Mayor Cohen moves to go into executive session on those parameters. Councilman Jensen, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous. We will go into executive session when room is clear. The council has come out of the executive session with no action taken. There is a need to continue the discussion. We will continue for another 30 minutes with the same people in attendance. And Councilman Emerson makes that motion. Councilman Claire, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. It is unanimous. We will go into executive session shortly. The council will take a short break and then resume for the fourth executive session. We are in break. The council is back in session. We are ready to proceed with the fourth executive session, if the city attorney would provide the parameters.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of 45 minutes to discuss confidential employment matters pertaining to non-elected personnel as justified by KSA 75-4319 subsection B1. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: members of the governing body, human resources director Jackie Russell, and myself.
Okay, those are the parameters. There's a motion to such. Councilman Emerson moves. Councilman Jensen, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. We are in unanimous. We are in executive session. I have it as 8:45, so at 9:30, we'll be over. The council has come out of its executive session with no action taken. There's no further business before the body. We are adjourned.